Welcome to the April 24th Board of Education Meeting, Kindergarten School District. Mrs. Kadrat, could we please have the roll?
Yes ma'am. Ms. Alderman.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. McCullough.
Here.
Mrs. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Stout.
Here.
Mr. Winters.
Mrs. Murphy.
Here. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before this incredible band leaves us, on behalf of the Board and the District, we'd like to thank you for your incredible performance. In fact, we were just saying maybe we'd like this to be a regular thing, because you guys are fabulous. Wonderful. And it was part of our 2016 bond that the three middle schools and our two high schools will be receiving brand-new band instruments next year. In fact, tonight we'll be addressing that, and we are glad to know that we, all these instruments are going to such great use. Thank you, Mr. Yaros, and I saw Mr. Sink Major in there, he's always around. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you've done. We truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Great job, kids. Good job.
So, just a few logistical things. If you were here just with the band students and you'd like to go at this time, we understand that. If you want to stick around, certainly feel free to use the seats that they were seated in, and we also have an overflow room right in the back that someone could assist you with if you can't find a spot. Once the student presentations are over, we usually have more open seats.
Okay. Under President's comments, we want you to know that the kindergarten roundup makeup will be this Wednesday, April 26th, at Indian Woods Elementary, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. For upcoming Board meetings, we have one Monday, May 1st, at 4:30 p.m., a special meeting to approve Bid Pack #5, which is the McKinley Early Childhood Center addition and the remodeling projects. Monday, May 15th, at 4:00 p.m., we have the groundbreaking ceremony for Early Childhood Center here at the McKinley Building. The event is open to the public. Monday, May 15th, at 6:45 p.m., the special Board meeting will be held to consider a resolution for the St. Clair County RISA Biennial Board of Education election, and on Monday, May 15th, at 7:00 p.m., we'll have a regular Board meeting. This time, we'll move to approving the minutes of the regular closed and special meetings, the regular enclosed meetings of March 20th, 2017, and the special meeting of April 10th, 2017. It's the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the minutes of the regular enclosed meetings of March 20th, 2017, and the special meeting of April 10th, 2017. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Support.
Mrs. Kadrat?
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now the superintendent's floor.
All right, thank you, President Murphy. Throughout the school year, we take time to honor exceptional students and staff at our monthly Board meetings, but tonight before we begin that regular process, I'd like to recognize two of our Board members who recently earned awards from the Michigan Association of School Boards. First is our Board Vice President, Rhonda Ryan. Mrs. Ryan has earned the following two awards: Master Board Member Award for completing certification levels 1 through 3, a total of 9 200-level classes, and a minimum of 208 education credits. Also, she completed the Advocacy Skills Specialty Certificate of Achievement. This is for completing MASB's Advocacy Skills Specialty to create community understanding and support for public education in Michigan. Secondly, and he couldn't be with us this evening, Board Trustee, Mr. Brian Winters, earned the Level 1 Certified Board Member Award. This is for completing all 100-level CBA classes, 101 through 109. These awards represent a great deal of personal time spent by both Mrs. Ryan and Mr. Winters. We appreciate their time and dedication to the Board and our District, and I would remind our community and our audience that our Board members are volunteers, so for them to put in this extra time, many times on the weekend, to get this additional training is certainly is appreciated. So congratulations to both. And I do have certificates and a pen for Mrs. Ryan's. If I ever need security, I think I know where to go for our next honorees. We're proud of some of our amazingly talented students. We're honoring Courtney Thomason and Casey Lambert. If you could both step to the podium, we'd appreciate it. On Saturday, March 11th, Courtney and Casey headed to Crossville Lexington High School to compete in the MHSPLA Varsity Girls Powerlifting State Competition. At the end of the day, both of them had captured the title of individual state champions, an honor held by only the elite in each of their sport. Allow me to share just a brief glimpse into each of their lives. Courtney is a junior at Port Huron High School and has a current GPA of 3.8. She has been powerlifting for three years. In addition, she is active in volleyball, basketball, track, softball, National Honor Society, and is very involved in activities with the class of 2018. Oh, in all of her spare time, she also works at the Texas Roadhouse. Courtney hopes to be involved in powerlifting in college, wise choice, and plans to pursue a career in social work or corrections. Casey is a senior at Port Huron High School and has a current GPA of 3.0. She has been a powerlifter for three years. In addition, she's involved in track, fun fitness, the leadership class at Port Huron High, she's a freshman mentor, and also a gym leader. Outside of school, she works at Burger King, and she plans to join the Army after school and then pursue a career in education as a health and PE teacher. Courtney and Casey also participated in the team powerlifting events at the state competition, assisting their team in capturing second place overall at the state meet. The team is coached by Melanie Taddy and assisted by Mr. John Johnson, who are both with us tonight. If you could stand, please. We certainly appreciate your work with our student athletes, and I also would add that the junior varsity team, also coached by Mrs. Taddy, captured first place at the state competition, so they had a very successful day. Melanie and John, thanks again for your guidance with Courtney and Casey, and as well as your other teams to such great success. And Courtney and Casey, you've achieved an accomplishment that every athlete dreams of, something to be very proud of, that you will always be able to remember and reflect upon. You've set the bar high for your fellow teammates and your role models for your fellow classmates. No one gets to this level achievement without discipline, determination, and perseverance. And on behalf of the Board and our entire community, we want to tell you how proud we are of you and wish you congratulations. We're going to have you just stay there so everyone can, you know, just kind of soak in the celebration. We're going to next nominate and recognize, he's already nominated, we're going to recognize Mr. Mike Cook, who's a 5th grade teacher at Quaden Elementary School. Now, he's being recognized for some innovation, and he has a news crew here with him, and I'm going to ask each member of the news crew to take a stand and wave what I call your name. So first, we have the master of the cue cards, Mr. Nathan Lasky. We have Paul the Weatherman, Backless. We have Dylan Gorley, our production crew, in charge of the set. Lily Woodruff, Photography and News Crew. Also on Photography and News Crew, Nalani Broderick. Part of the production crew, Caleb Nordberg. First of our four hosts, Alison Ross, Preston Lee, Anthony Nuffs, and Kayla Patterson. We appreciate all of you being here tonight to support your teacher. Mr. Cook has been with Port Huron School since 2007, beginning first as a sub and then working with our after-school program. In September of 2012, he was hired as a teacher for the district. Mr. Cook is being recognized tonight for his innovating work to establish live morning broadcast of the daily news at Quaden Elementary School. Principal Charles Lesser shared the following with us. "Mr. Cook decided our school needed a live broadcast of the daily news events instead of just hearing them read over the PA system. He reached out to our local experts to find out how he could broadcast live from his classroom using a laptop, and the rest is history. We now have daily morning announcements that are streamed live into all classrooms. Once the broadcast has concluded, we post a link on our Facebook page so the community can keep up with the latest and the greatest at Quaden." Teachers give high accolades to Mr. Cook and his news crew. Teachers have stated that the kids are more engaged with announcements because of the live video stream versus traditional PA system. Mr. Cook has created a culture in his classroom where students take the lead on quite a few great initiatives. For example, when 5th grader Paul Backless heard they were going to do the morning announcements live from the room, he volunteered to be the weather forecaster, and now we understand he's quite the celebrity at Quaden. Just take a moment to view one of the broadcasts, and you will see why we all love getting our weather forecast from Paul. Other students travel around the school for news stories and important reminders to keep our school safe, clean, and always an engaging place to learn. We are fortunate to have Mr. Cook as a dedicated educator that is not afraid to take a risk to improve how we communicate with our community on a daily basis. And we certainly couldn't agree more with Principal Lesser. Mr. Cook, thank you for your efforts to innovate in your classroom for our students, staff at our community. Thank you. Thank you. Before our honorees shake hands and are congratulated by the School Board this evening, I'd like to again thank Mrs. Brenda Johnston for her part in our monthly recognition. Mrs. Johnston is here representing Insurance Specialist Agency of Marysville, our local memic agent. ISA is partnering with us in this effort to recognize outstanding students and staff, and will be presenting each honoree with a $25 gift certificate. Thank you for your partnership. Well, if you were here for the student recognition tonight and you would like to go at this time, we understand, but you're certainly more than welcome to stay for the duration of the Board meeting.
Okay, we'll see you later. See you. I just came for the entertainment.
Great job.
Awesome accomplishment.
Congratulations. I don't need some seats. And I'll move forward.
No, I gotta call them off.
Such a proud moment for those parents, though.
You're stuck in the front row. Nice. Just like school.
Well, that was great. Now, moving on to curriculum and special reports, we have a bond construction update. Mr. Kane?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Doug Underwood from McCarthy &amp; Smith.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Again, I'm Doug Underwood with McCarthy &amp; Smith. Things have started happening with the 2016 bond from a construction standpoint. Wanted to give you a brief update tonight with where we are currently at. Bid Pack 1 was the first bid pack that we, that had gone out for bid. I think contracts were awarded back in January for that work. It was basically some athletic improvements. We had Port Huron High School, where we are replacing the bleachers within the gymnasium and also replacing the main court for the basketball in the gym. We are also redoing the mezzanine floors as far as refinishing them while we have the bleachers out. Port Huron Northern High School, again, replacement of the bleachers and then also replacement of the tennis courts, and Port Huron High School is also getting tennis courts as well. Fort Grasset, we're replacing the gym bleachers and the wood flooring, and then at Memorial Stadium, we're replacing the benches in the stadium. We're also painting within the stadium proper and then doing some minor waterproofing on the stadium so that water isn't dripping down below. Put together, and very hard to read here, but kind of our roadmap for this summer. We've broken down the individual projects. There's things coming up immediately back in February, when I think the big hockey tournament was supposed to be outside, and I don't think it happened this year because of the weather, but we did wait until that scheduled event was over and we removed the bleachers. Our new seating is scheduled to arrive within the next week and a half or so. In the meantime, we are doing some of the waterproofing, and we are also beginning to paint in the stadium with the idea we want to get far enough ahead with the paint so that when the bleacher seats or the benches do show up, we can begin installing them and get that work over with early in the summer here. Upcoming work, we are starting the tennis courts next week, Monday, May 1st, at Port Huron High School. They have made arrangements to move the program, I believe, over to a city facility and finish out the year there so that we can get a jump on that. The gym bleachers at Port Huron High School, we're going to begin removing those on June 5th. Again, there's been a lot of coordination with the administration over at that building to make that happen, and again, that allows us the opportunity, right when school's out, to begin the floor replacement within the gym there. And then on June 5th, we will also start the tennis court replacement at Port Huron High School. Just a look, it was a cloudy day at Memorial, but believe it or not, the benches are gone. Basically, what you see here, again, we are painting the interior portions of that stadium. So the front wall, where all the numbering is, is going to be repainted. The rampways going down to the front are going to get painted, the press box will get repainted, and then the bleacher seating will go on, and actually, I think we're doing, is that me? Actually, we're doing red seats on the big red side, and we are doing blue benches on the northern side. Bid Package 2 consisted of Kroll &amp; Mishigami. Again, this is work that was bid out early this winter. These contracts have been approved. We took advantage of some work over the spring break with painting the gymnasiums. We painted the ceilings and the walls in the gym. We still have some doors and frames that will be painted at the end of the summer, but the reason we wanted to jump ahead on that was, we planned to use the gyms this summer as we empty out the classrooms for the work to happen, and the classrooms are going to utilize the gymnasiums for storage space of books and boxes and materials from the classrooms. So we wanted to get that painting done ahead of schedule so that we could accommodate that. In addition to that, electrical-mechanical work has begun in these buildings. We've got a lot of new pipe that's getting fed into classrooms for the new vertical unit ventilators, which will house the air conditioning within the classrooms. The electrical work, same thing. Summers have gotten shorter and shorter, it seems like, every year, so we're taking advantage of the second shift after the kids are out of the building to come in and make some headway on some of the behind-the-scenes work in order to get ready for the summer. Just a couple pictures. This is Kroll's gym. One thing I do want to add, at Kroll &amp; Mishigami, and this will also hold true for Wilson and Howland Woods, we are replacing the light fixtures in the gymnasiums as well. Light fixtures right now are anticipated to be on site somewhere around the third or fourth week of May, so again, we will get into the gyms on a second shift basis before school gets out to get that lighting replaced as well, which is really going to make the new paint job stand out. It'll be very good. Let me skip one here. Nope, that's Mishigami. So the picture on the left-hand side is some of the new piping that is going in that will carry the hot water to the new unit ventilators. We've been working above ceilings, we've been working in areas where there aren't ceilings right now, and again, it's been very beneficial. I tell you, the staffs in the building have been excellent to work with, and we're keeping them up to date on where we're headed. The gym painting at Mishigami as well. Bid Package 3 was Woodrow Wilson and Howland Woods Middle School. Again, kind of the same update on these. We did the gyms over the spring break period, and we are proceeding with the electrical and mechanical rough-in work on second shift. Couple shots, the one on the left is a little tough to see, but we are installing some of the new conduits, new electrical panels, again, as much work as we can possibly get done. Picture of the gym painting at Woodrow Wilson and Howland Woods Middle School, the gym. Now, a few things that we got coming up at these buildings is, we are shutting the media centers down a little bit early. The idea behind that is we will clear the media centers out at the 1st of June so that we can get in there and begin to recreate what is now going to be the Learning Center or Learning Commons, I think is what the architect is calling that. We will be bringing bids for the moving, that we bid out, professional moving companies, we'll bring in those to you next week on Monday, and we're getting geared up. It's exciting. I think people are seeing things happen in the buildings, and we're happy to have the opportunity to work on the second shift at this time to get some things started. And with that, I will answer any questions, if there are any.
Sounds good. Fabulous.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now, Dina Tuchek is going to talk to us about the STEAM program.
All right. I brought with me today a short video that kind of looks at STEAM, because if you're not really sure what that is, I thought this might be a quick glimpse into what STEAM looks like, and that STEAM means science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So we'll put the little video up. It's just a short video.
It goes like this from far away. Oh, it might be a lever. I get it.
All of these are connected, and then it connects to the batteries.
I like working on robotics and using mechanical arms and robotics and vex all at the same time, trying to get them to talk together.
Learning problem-solving skills that Project Lead the Way curriculum teaches you is going to help you in whatever field that you go through.
You're working on something huge, and you're making a huge impact.
When you walk into a PLW classroom, what you find is tremendous excitement and passion, not only from the teachers but from students.
Project Lead the Way is great in that there's so much hands-on. Every activity we do gives the kids the chance to have a more in-depth understanding.
With like your biology class, you kind of hit certain points, but then with the biomedical classes, you go more in-depth with diseases and heart functions and body functions.
Project Lead the Way has five programs, all of which are designed to prepare students for post-secondary education and careers in the global economy. Launch is for students in kindergarten through 5th grade, designed to capture their interest and spark a lifelong passion for math and science. Our Gateway Program for students in 6th through 8th grade is a series of nine-week units that continues to engage students' natural curiosity and problem-solving, and shows them the relevancy of math and science in their lives. And we have three high school programs. The Engineering Program is a series of full-year courses that gives students a deeper look at the engineering design process and teaches them to think critically, solve problems, and to collaborate. In our Biological Science Program, students explore human medicine, public health, human body systems, and medical careers. And finally, our Computer Science Program, which is designed to build student interest and engagement in computer science, develop computational thinking skills, and explore topics like programming, data mining, and cybersecurity. When we think of the STEM pipeline and science, technology, engineering, mathematics, it's clear across our nation that we have a shortage.
This is where the jobs are. This is where the future is. There's a national interest, there's a national security interest. There's just a ton of reasons to get better in science, technology, engineering, and math.
We want students to understand that when they leave high school or they go into college or post-secondary education, they go to the workplace, they're not going to find themselves isolated and as single problem solvers, but rather as group problem solvers.
They're not given a textbook answer. There's not a textbook lab to follow. They really have to think of their own problems and their own solutions.
We learned how to calculate the stress throughout every part of a bridge. We could, that's how we determined how to build our bridge. We knew we had to put support right here, right here, so that it didn't collapse right away.
We have to think differently about the way we engage students. So we spend a lot of time training teachers, helping them learn to teach differently.
We have teachers that go to summer training every year, and they take the Project Lead the Way courses. When they come back to us, they're teaching us current stuff that's in the field today.
This is a big component of the course, working through this and practicing it, asking each other questions and talking through it. Hopefully, we're going over the questions the students will have.
Our students do better, they persist, they outperform, and most importantly, they get excited about learning.
All of our students who have participated in Project Lead the Way, their tests on ACT are through the roof.
It's also going to help them perform better in college and later in life because you're introducing skills that will be beneficial to them.
I already know that when I go into college, I want to jump right in into engineering. I definitely feel like being exposed to it for four years, I can't go a year without it.
That's just a quick, brief overview of Project Lead the Way, which is the curriculum that we're looking at in terms of our STEAM programming. We started out the school year in September, developing a committee of staff members that participated in looking at STEAM across the district. This wasn't just looking at a curriculum, this was looking at the labs, this was looking at the construction that would occur, it was looking at programs that were potential for our buildings, and looking at what our staff needed in terms of professional development and the rollout that we would have here at the district. A committee was formed in September. We had 29 staff members who participated, 15 of those were teachers, and then we also had administrators and curriculum staff on the district committee. The planning meetings focused on what were the, you know, we started with basically, what were the needs and wants of the staff and the district in terms of developing and putting into place STEAM programming within the district? So we looked at, you know, what were our fears, what did we want to see happening, what type of curriculum were we looking at? Were we comfortable with just going in and developing our own curriculum, or did we need to have, did we need some guidance in that curriculum? So we spent a lot of time working through what our needs and wants were, how we would design those labs, what things we thought we needed to have in place when we were looking at that, and then the furniture, the storage. We did some site visits, we went to, we had staff that attended a Project Lead the Way conference, and we did some curriculum review. Some of the outcomes or the things that we decided that we wanted to see in that space So, we looked at, you know, what were our fears? What did we want to see happening? What type of curriculum were we looking at? Were we comfortable with just going in and developing our own curriculum, or did we need to have, did we need some guidance in that curriculum? So, we spent a lot of time working through what our needs and wants were, how we would design those labs, what things we thought we needed to have in place when we were looking at that, and then the furniture, the storage. We did some site visits. We went to, we had staff that attended a Project Lead the Way conference, and we did some curriculum review. Some of the outcomes or the things that we decided that we wanted to see in that space were to have some durable flooring, poured concrete at the high schools. It's a little bit different at the middle schools. Each of the labs has an ideation space, which is a space where students get together and begin to plan their projects, plan what their workout. The buildings have two to three labs in them, large storage areas, technology carts that are focused on the type of work that they'll be doing in those environment, the electrical capacity from the ceiling or around the room that would be set up so to make the work that they'll be doing in those rooms easier, multiple monitors within the classroom so that they can learn from a variety of different angles within the room and that their information can be accessible to them at multiple angles, multiple deep dish sinks and flexible movable furniture. Those were all things that the committee of 29 felt were important things to have in that, in those labs. Some of the views that you would see of the buildings or the renderings that have come up at some of our meetings, if you haven't seen them, this is an ideation space, the rendering for Holland Woods. This is what one of the labs would look like at Holland Woods. Holland Woods is one of our first building, middle schools that will go through this process. This is the Port Huron Northern graph sketch for their STEAM edition that will be at the front of their building. This is an ideation space at Port Huron Northern where they will be, again, able to work through and problem-solve and begin to develop their interventions and project-based learning that they're due. This is what one of the lab studios looks like with storage area around the rooms. Another collaboration area, this is just another view of that collaboration area. So, the district needs, when we looked at STEAM and what we wanted to see happen for it, was we were looking at a comprehensive K through 12 aligned curriculum. So, we wanted the opportunity to branch out and not only provide high school STEAM classes but also middle school, and then the ability to then move into elementary program, programming. We were looking for teacher professional development. We weren't ready as a district to go in and start and develop whole curriculums for STEAM, so we were looking to have professional development for our staff along with some structured-developed curriculum that was aligned K through 12. We looked for, we're looking for support or with community partnerships, so we're looking to expand our programs and have partnerships within the community. And then, we also wanted to have opportunities for our high school students for honors opportunities and college credit, and then the support of the developments of the STEAM labs. So, we wanted a company or a program that could work with us and help us with what we wanted to see in those labs. The curriculum that we then looked at was Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way encompassed many of those criteria that we set up in the other, on the last slide. It's a K through 12 aligned curriculum, but it has the ability for you just to take out high school, middle school, or elementary, whichever one you'd like to start with. It is a fully-designed and developed curriculum. Our staff, who will end up going through that professional development and training, will have that opportunity to get that curriculum online, and then they can instruct from that curriculum. The curriculum is teaching style for a Project Lead the Way program, has teachers instructing for about 10 minutes, and then the rest of that time is students independent or collaboratively working. So, it really puts the onus of the learning back onto the students. It has, it had an extensive community collaboration model, so it had a program that was designed to work with the community, to look at what your community needs are, and begin to put that program together. So, partnerships with the community will be key for us as we move forward. Project Lead the Way had grant opportunities that were available to them as you move through that curriculum. It provides different opportunities throughout the year where you can access different grants that are available for districts that are putting that program into place. Again, it had opportunities for high school honors and college credit. We, it will come in a partnership model with some universities that are currently giving credit for that program. It has ongoing professional development for our teachers, so it has not only training within the summer, as you heard on the video, but it also aligns and sets our teachers up with the opportunity to have mentors from, who are instructing on that curriculum across the state of Michigan or across the country for them to ask questions or seek advice and support as they run through those lessons. And it also provided us with some specifications for our STEAM labs. So, it gave us a hu, a huge packet that kind of guided you through the process of what you would, what you would put into a STEAM lab. So, the middle school class that we're looking at is starting at Holland Woods, is part of the Gateway Program, and the proposed offerings for the beginning of next year are Design and Modeling and Medical Detectives. Those are two classes that are basic starter classes under the Project Lead the Way model, and it gives a lot of basic information, but it also gives that exposure to our students who are not really sure what this is, but gives them the opportunity to have exposure into STEAM. Then, we look at rolling out additional classes as we go. There are many classes under the Project Lead the Way model. There are nine different units in the Gateway Model, which is the middle school. There are four units per grade in the elementary, so every, every grade level has the potential for four different units to that. There are nine units in the high school in the engineering program. So, there's the opportunity for us to have diverse or differentiate our classes based off what the needs of our community are by choosing different engineering classes as we go through, based off student need, staff training. And then, there are four classes under the biomedical section that we, but we'll start with our basic introduction to engineering at both high schools and then principles of medical science at both high schools. Some of the high school opportunities that we talked about briefly were the opportunity to have alternative credits. The biomedical class can count as a biology credit or, I'm sorry, as a third science, and our engineering class can count as a fourth math or electives within the, within the school environment. There's a potential for an endorsed diploma if you're taking AP classes or if you're taking in combination with Project Lead the Way classes, skilled training and focused in the fields of biomedical and manufacturing, and has intensive classes that are really focused on perseverance, problem-solving, collaboration, and world experiences. So, it sets our students out to be able to, whether they're a college student that's going to go on to college, or whether they're a student who's going to enter the workforce right after high school, it gives them those basic skills to go out and get a job, those soft skills that we want our students to have, but also has, gives them some real-life world experiences in the classroom. We had over 200 students that, we had classes, students take and enroll for classes to see what they would like. We had over 200 students that were interested in some form of STEAM class at Northern, and we had over 120 students that were interested in classes at Port Huron High School. A big focus of Project Lead the Way is the development of our community partnerships. We'll be looking at collaborating with community partnerships on our STEAM lab. We'll be looking at internship capabilities with community agencies, career exploration and job shadowing as we go along, sponsorship opportunities for our students, and recently, the curriculum department wrote a grant and received a $25,000 grant from my STEAM advocacy council to sponsor and support this program within the school district. Part of that grant requires that we can adhere to some timelines related to staff training and enrollment in that program for their training during the summer. So, we're asking the board tonight to take action on the approval of the Project Lead the Clap, Lead the Way classes as a whole, so you'll have that opportunity later in the meeting. Thank you.
Any comments? Any thoughts?
Just a quick question. So, if you're starting at sixth grade, is there some point in the future that you're going to look at the elementary school and be adding some at third grade?
It definitely has that opportunity to do that. We're piloting programs at Holland Woods because they're the first building that will have those STEAM labs in the fall. It gives us with the program, it gives us that opportunity. We didn't want to rule out the opportunity to do a K-5 programming, so this program has that comprehensive rollout.
When I think back, 23 years ago, we were questioning, how do we get more women interested in engineering? What great opportunities here for all our students?
Well, there's probably a bigger need in technology.
Yeah, well, we didn't know about technology back then.
I wouldn't know back then.
I know. I know.
I have a quick question. Is this the same packet that we got in IDC? And I don't believe that was approved by IDC yet, so how, just talk me through what that means.
IDC is an advisory committee to the superintendent, so they do make, they do advise that. The final recommendation was brought to the April's meeting. The IDC at that time chose not to take action due to our timelines and preparing and following the grant requirements. We are moving that forward tonight.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. We'll move on now to the K-8 ELA adoption presentation. Dave Roberts.
Get to follow Doug's voice in Project Lead the Way. That's a tough, tough follow-up. Tonight, literacy leaders from around the district and the Instructional Services Department bring to you the kindergarten through eighth-grade ELA adoption process, a request, and the next steps in the process of updating our K-8 grade, kindergarten through eighth-grade ELA curriculum. The beginnings of the ELA adoption began in May of 2016 with the creation of the ELA Castle Team. Castle Teams' content area site team leaders are selected in a collaborative process with the Port Huron Education Association, building administrators, and Department of Instructional Services staff. Castle Team teachers are selected to represent both their building and their content area expertise that the Castle Team is studying, in this case of the K-8 ELA adoption. The ELA Castle Team is comprised of literacy leaders representing each elementary and middle school in the district. Following the development of the ELA Castle Team, the Instructional Services Department initiated the process of curriculum adoption by opening a study application with Port Huron Schools Instructional Development Council, known as IDC. This begins the study of the district's ELA curriculum, kindergarten through eighth grade. In November of 2016, the K-8 ELA Castle Team had their initial meeting as a group. Here, the team was first given their important mission and purpose, and then they participated in a data dialogue around the district's academic achievement scores in reading. The group's hard work over the next several months will be integral in what literacy instruction looks like in our district for years to come. The data dialog surfaced the need for a comprehensive study into programs and resources that support modern reading instruction. That brings us to January 2017. The themes of this meeting were research and evaluation. To begin the new year, the ELA Castle Team met in January to delve into the latest research around ELA programs. One objective of this meeting was answering the essential question, what are the key components of an effective ELA program? Taking into account insights from the data dialogue that took place in November and the review of the research, the team set out to develop a list of components, characteristics, and structures to include in a rubric that will then be used to evaluate English language arts programs later in the adoption process. Another way of thinking of these rubric components is to think of them as a list of program must-haves or non-negotiables, based on the Castle Team's data analysis, research review, and ongoing discussions. During the month of February, updates on the progress of the ELA Castle Team's work was provided to the Board of Education and IDC. Also during the month of February, the ELA Castle Team was hard at work. During the February meeting, they had two objectives. One, they would work on finalizing the work they had started in January on the criteria they would use to evaluate potential curricular resources, and two, they would create a common rating scale. The rubrics the group created consisted of seven components, and each of those components consisted of several attributes. In this case, on the screen, we have Component One of the kindergarten through second-grade rubric. You can see the name of the component right here. It says "Text." The texts in the program provide, and that component is followed by attributes such as a balance of fiction and informational text and a balance of genres that reflect the characteristics required for the grade. This is an example of a component from the kindergarten through second-grade rubric. There is also a rubric for third through eighth grade. The ELA Team had a starting point for these rubrics. That starting point was the latest research into ELA instruction and a nationally-aligned instructional materials evaluation tool. They took the original research and set of program standards and adjusted any components they needed clarifying and added attributes that were important to them. An example of this was the team determining that it was important that technology was integrated into the use of the program. In this case, it was important to the group that tech, that the technology component wasn't just a standalone piece. Also during February, also during the February meeting, the team created the Common Rubric Grading Scale that you see on the screen. It was important for the team to design this scale to both ensure that all members clearly understood what each level stood for and to have a common scoring system for each component. They knew, as a group, an example, that at two, that a score of two meant that the component was covered sufficiently to support student expectations and that a new teacher could consistently teach the component well with the materials provided. The work of the committee during January and February laid the foundation for vendor presentations that occurred on March 8th and 9th. Armed with their newly-designed rubric and grading scale, the ELA Castle Team heard what the vendors had to say. The schedule of these two days followed a format where a vendor presentation was given, and then this presentation was followed by a debrief session amongst committee members. During this debrief, committee members reviewed any physical materials they wanted, made notes on their rubrics, and then discussed their thoughts with the entire group. Following the presentations, the team met at the end of March to finalize their rubric scores and review the materials. These scores were input into an online forum to aggregate all scores from committee members. This would ultimately determine which program most aligned to the components of the rubric. Throughout the entire process, committee members were responsible for updating their schools on the progress of the study. One of these updates included when physical and online materials were available for program review by all kindergarten through eighth-grade instructional staff. From February 17th to March 29, 24th, online sandboxes for each program were available for review. A sandbox, in this case, is an online environment set up so teachers can experience the digital components of the program. Rubrics were provided for these online components so all teachers could provide feedback along with a digital parking lot where teachers could, teachers could ask questions and offer comments. February 28th through March 9th, we had the physical print materials review for all grades. Kindergarten through eighth were available for teachers to review at that time. Again, rubrics were provided, and a parking lot was available for any questions or concerns that they may have around the programs. To conclude the ongoing material review opportunities, the committee members participated in a digital collaborative meeting. Here, members discussed in a virtual environment any questions, concerns, or insights they had around the programs that were presented. The bar graph you see before you reflects the compiled scores for the programs that were evaluated by the ELA Team. The percents you see above each bar were determined by taking the scores from every rubric component that was filled out by Castle Team members. The number above each bar shows the percent of total number of points from the rubric that each program earned according to those evaluations by teachers. For example, we see that My Perspectives received the score of 93.48. The rubric designed for the middle school programs had a total of 144 points. That means that, on average, after compiling all rubrics, that My Perspectives earned 134.6 points. This percentage above each programs bar gives us a picture of the alignment of the programs to the rubric that was designed by the ELA Castle Team earlier on in the process. Again, as mentioned before, this rubric reflects best practice, latest research, along with components added by K- latest research, along with components added by Castle Teams that were important to them. As shown on the previous bar graph, the two programs most aligned to the criteria set forth by the team are Benchmark Advance at the elementary level and Pearson's My Perspectives at the middle school level. Due to financial constraints, we are spreading the purchase of these materials over three fiscal years. Pending board approval, we are proposing the following purchasing phases. For the sixteen-seventeen budget year, our goal is to purchase the sixth through eighth grade materials. The plan is then to purchase kindergarten through second grade during the seventeen-eighteen fiscal year, followed by the purchasing of the third through fifth grade during the eighteen-nineteen fiscal year. Next steps, the immediate next steps in the adoption of the kindergarten through eighth grade curriculum is approval from the Board of Education. Each time we are ready to initiate the next purchasing phase, we will bring the request before the Board of Education for approval. Tonight, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the sixth through eighth grade My Perspectives materials from Pearson. If approved tonight, the Instructional Services Department will begin professional development. ELA teachers, both on the ELA Castle Team and others, have requested as much professional development as possible prior to the end of the year. Our first opportunity for PD is Friday, April 28th. On Friday, we are fortunate that our calendar provides for a half-day of professional development for all middle school teachers. We currently have trainers for Pearson on hold pending the outcome of tonight's meeting. This will allow us to maximize our PD opportunities for this year and provide as much professional development time as possible while reducing the amount of professional development occurring during teacher prep. This recommendation will be coming for your consideration later on in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions?
Just a real quick question. Why doing section by section on this request when the prior request was for a full curriculum spread? Just out of curiosity on the difference between the two as a newer board member.
Because of financial restraints and fiscal responsibility, it is, it's quite an adoption. I can answer that question by commenting the work of the thirty teachers, our principal representation, and our facilitators from the Instructional Services Department, Cindy Compton and Rochelle Wine Coop. This is a big endeavor, and to implement all kindergarten through eighth grade ELA programming in one year would be, would be a big mountain to climb.
And the Project Lead the Way request before the board this evening is approval of courses only, no financial expenditures this evening. Where this request for the K-8 ELA is certainly a financial approval by the board tonight.
Anyone else?
I'd just point out, too, that most often in our academic curriculum textbook purchases, a big upfront cost comes the first year. And then we traditionally, year after year, have a recommendation come to the board for approving the consumables that go along with the original purchase. And so there is, there is a significant, like Mr. Kane pointed out, upfront cost for the startup on new. We've had that recently with our math series and our other series.
Wish we could do it all. Thank you, Dave. We've received no correspondence this month, so this leads us to our first opportunity for citizens to speak. The audience has the opportunity to address the board at this time. Please direct your comments to the board as a whole. Comments become part of the public record. Speakers are cautioned not to use names of individuals during their comments, especially the names of students, and these comments are not a time for personal attacks. Please state your name and your address. And in the interest of time while addressing the board, we'd like to limit comments to three minutes. Kathy?
Kathy Murray, Port Huron. I really didn't have any intention of speaking tonight at this time. I just didn't realize we were going to be voting on STEAM or the K-8 ELA curriculum adoption tonight. Because at IDC last Monday, we didn't choose not to take action on the STEAM presentation. We chose to table the presentation because the committee still had lots of questions on the presentation. And we didn't even get to the ELA K-8 adoption because we ran out of time. IDC is supposed to deal with curriculum as well as teaching methods, techniques, pupil testing, evaluation, textbooks, research, and experimentation as they relate to curriculum to bring about improvement for the Port Huron Area School District. And to say that I am concerned is an understatement. I really actually am very disappointed right now. Mr. Roberts made a motion at that meeting to hold a special meeting, which our committee and our teachers would have agreed to, to continue the meeting, to have all of the rest of our questions answered. And we have not been approached, to my knowledge, about having a special meeting to continue finishing the STEAM presentation or the K-8 ELA curriculum adoption presentation. In fact, I helped Mr. Roberts make the motion to hold a special meeting. The value that, and the time and the energy that these members on these committees have put into both of these programs needs to be valued. And you've been a teacher for so many years, you know how much time goes into any one of these curriculum adoptions. We didn't have any teachers there to present. They should have been invited. I feel like there's more that I should say right now, but I'm actually just really stunned. And I think that if the IDC members were all here today, they would be stunned as well that this is how that we're proceeding right now. I know that time is of the essence, but I really think that we should have been contacted to hold a special meeting. It's not that we're saying we don't want these things to take place, we just have further questions as a committee. That's what I heard from all nine teachers who were there that day, that they have further questions about both of these. Actually, I shouldn't say both of them. We didn't get to the ELA K-8 committee at all because we ran out of time. That's how long STEAM took. And we weren't given, I guess, sufficient updates all the way along. So I'm concerned about adopting this tonight without IDC having given a recommendation to this committee. Because part of what IDC is supposed to do is to give a recommendation to the superintendent, which then gives the recommendation to the board so that the board shall act upon this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else at this time who wish to address the board? Okay, we'll move on then to our items for action. Accepting gifts and grants from donors, Keely Verabo.
Each month, principals and directors from their respective buildings and departments submit memoranda indicating gifts and grants that were given to the Port Huron Area School District. This month, we would like to thank and recognize the following. The Community Foundation of St. Clair County's Youth Advisory Council, YAC Fund, which has presented fifteen hundred dollars to Port Huron High School for the 2017 Victory Day event. First Robotics Team 3667, the Mechannum Knights, has recently received donations from the following sponsors in support of their work preparing for competitions. Brad Forsner and Team 6344, the Yale Gigawatts 2000, the Society of Women Engineers 1000. The ever-generous Brenda Johnston with Insurance Specialists of Marysville Memic has generously donated three thousand two hundred dollars to be awarded as grants. Each of our sixteen schools will be receiving two hundred dollars for the following teachers and programs. And I'm not going to go through all of the details. I'll let EJ go through some of the slides, and you can review which programs and which teachers at which of our buildings are receiving these grants. And finally, the St. Clair County Medical Society Foundation and the YMCA of the Bluewater Area have awarded grants totaling five thousand four hundred dollars for the Walk for Summer Reading Programs in the following elementary schools. Edison Elementary received eight hundred. Garfield Elementary received one thousand two hundred and fifty. Indian Woods Elementary, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Kiwaden Elementary, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And Roosevelt Elementary, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. It is my recommendation that these donations and grants be accepted and that a letter of appreciation be sent on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Keely. Great, any discussion? Wow, great, great awards. Much appreciation. Mrs. Kadrat, the role.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks. Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to the approval of our annual consensus evaluation of our superintendent, Jamie Kane. The board met in closed session on Monday, March 20th, to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Board consensus was to award Mr. Kane a highly effective evaluation. Proud to announce that. Lots has been accomplished, and this is just a great moment for us as a board to recognize you in this way.
Thank you very much.
It is the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the consensus highly effective evaluation for Jamie Kane, our superintendent.
So moved.
Support.
Any comments?
I would just make one comment. This is the first time that the board has had the opportunity to sit down with the new evaluation system. And we all attended the mandatory training evening, too, so that we were, so everybody was coming at this from the same direction, on the same page, and the same understanding of that. And so personally, I was very, very excited to, once again, award a highly effective evaluation for superintendent for all the hard work that's been ongoing and that we continue to, hope we'll continue.
Mrs. Kadrat, the role.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now then will be recommending that the Board of Education approve the extension of Mr. Kane's contract according to the terms of the agreement.
So moved.
Any questions, discussion? Mrs. Kadrat?
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good.
Thank you.
We can move on now. Division of Business Services. It's a recommendation, we usually take all three of these items together, that the Board of Education receives and reviews the presentation of bills and receives and files the Treasuries Report, both dated March 31st, 2017, and approves the reimbursement to the general fund as presented.
Support.
Mrs. Kadrat?
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, awarding contracts for the 2016 Bond Musical Instruments. It's a recommendation.
I just need to comment, it's a lot of musicals.
Oh, it is. Right, right. It's a recommendation that the Board of Education awards purchase orders for musical instruments to the vendors as stated for the total amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? The bands are so excited. Mrs. Kadrat, the role.
Well, I would just, just one comment before we, as we have in the past with other bonds, I was excited to see that this portion of the bond, the funds being spent, the majority of the funds are going to a local Port Huron Music Center vendor. Slightly over three hundred thousand of that three hundred plus goes to a local supplier. So that's great.
It's good you mentioned that. Thank you. Mrs. Kadrat?
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on now to awarding the contract for Internet service. Bids were solicited for Internet service through our E-Rate Consultant Convergent Technology Partners for the period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2016, or '18, sorry. St. Clair County RESA submitted the lowest qualified bid for the non-discounted amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. This is an increase of four thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and eight cents from last year's bid of two hundred and seventeen thousand, one forty-nine and sixty cents. The E-Rate discount for Port Huron Area School District will be approximately eighty percent, bringing our portion of the bid to approximately forty-four thousand, three hundred. It's a recommendation that the Board of Education awards the contract for Internet service for July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, to the lowest qualified bidder, St. Clair County RESA, for the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion, questions? Mrs. Kadrat?
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have vacant land at Campbell and Kiwaden Roads, and it is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopts the resolution authorizing the sale of the vacant land at Campbell and Kiwaden Roads. Parcel number seventy-four twenty-one oh nine dash zero 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 and seventy-four dash twenty dash zero one nine dash one zero zero two dash zero zero zero, approximately forty-nine point seven four acres in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions, comments?
Could I ask, can we get just a brief explanation of how we got to this point with that? Because that property's been, this is my seventeenth year on the board, and that property's been vacant since before I got on the board, so.
Absolutely. So if we recall, the Board of Education, within the last year and a half, declared all of our land that we were not using a surplus for the purpose of trying to generate revenue or determined that if we're not going to use it, let's try to sell it and make sure that we're getting a fair market value. So fast-forwarding to this parcel, I'm going to ask Mr. Kahulis to, or Mrs. Patnir, actually. Nice trade-off there. To kind of maybe walk through, we had it listed with Kramer Realty, and if you would just kind of walk through how this came to be.
Yes, we had it listed with Kramer Realty, and originally listed in March of 2015 at a list price of one hundred and ninety thousand, which was at the top end of the appraisal range that we received. So we originally, the original offer was for one hundred and sixty thousand, and we were able to negotiate that up to the one hundred and sixty-seven five and come to a recommendation for you on that.
I'd just like to point out, too, that when, we've had some of these in the past. We've sold the grant property, and we sold the Elspartingville School. And in general, those proceeds from that go into the general fund, but specifically into the Capital Improvements Fund. And this is, this is a one-time dollar revenue that the board traditionally does not commit to an ongoing or recurring expense as another portion of the budget. So this will, this is our intent at this time, is to take, completion of the sale, is to take those proceeds and stick them into the Capital Improvement Fund for future possibly unexpected expenses, boilers, roof leaks, and those types of things in existing buildings or around the district, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That's what we should do. Thank you.
Do we have a motion or a name?
Yes.
The vote, please.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We also have a partial portion of land that we would like to declare as surplus property. It is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopts the resolution declaring a portion of vacant parcel number seventy-four dash two zero dash zero one five dash four zero five eight dash zero zero zero, approximately fifty feet by seventy-five feet, which is three thousand, seven hundred and fifty square feet, located at the northwest corner of the parent parcel located at four eight oh one Lake Shore Road, Fort Grashit, as surplus property and authorizes the administration to take steps to sell such property.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? We should explain this one, too.
I'll take that one.
I think we're going to let Theo take this one.
She did great on that one.
She passed it.
So the district was approached by a neighbor, and this is the back corner of Kiwaden's main, Kiwaden Elementary's main property. We were approached, if we were, they want to expand their property. I went out with the neighbor and walked the land. It's in the forest back there. We don't have much use for that area, and they would use it for a good. We don't have much use for that area, and they would use it for, for a good cause. So, we asked for an appraisal at the neighbor's expense to find out exactly what it would be worth, and that's what's, what would be in, in front of you if you so choose to make it surplus, then we would do it. It's a landlocked, the neighbor owns all the property around us, and it's my opinion, we don't have use for that small little corner there. Questions about that?
Do we have a motion?
We did, we have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just point out that this is not the first time we've done this. We, we did approve a similar type of action for surplus property out at the property to the south of Indian Woods Elementary School that provides a small sliver of that property for the future roundabout at Allen and Lepire. And that, so it's, it's a, it's not an unusual request that we could do that.
Any other questions? Mrs. Kadrat, the role.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Board members, the PHEA has agreed to the calendars for 2017-18 that were attached in your board notes. There's one calendar for Cleveland Elementary, which runs on a balanced calendar year, and a second calendar for the other schools in the district. It's the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the negotiated traditional and balanced calendars for the 2017-2018 school year.
So moved.
Any discussion? Mrs. Kadrat.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And as a note, these calendars will be posted on the district website within the next 24 hours for everyone's viewing. We also then need to approve the negotiated traditional calendar for the 2018-19 school year. And the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the negotiated traditional calendar of 2018-19 school year for Porcheron Schools for all schools not identified for improvement by the state of Michigan. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any questions, discussion? The role, please.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel changes. It is the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the personnel report as presented.
Support.
Any questions, discussion? Mrs. Kadrat.
We, because we have, maybe, we have a couple administrative retirements we could identify that are under this. We have Gloria Henry, Principal at Harrison Center, retiring July 31st after 29 years, and Mr. Donnelly Hernandez, Principal of Campbell Elementary, June 30th this year, 24 years. Congratulations to both of those individuals.
We certainly hope to see them in May when we honor all of our retirees from the school district.
With a bigger smile.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under Division for Instructional Services, it is the recommendation that the Board of Education approves all project lead-the-way courses as presented. May I have a motion?
Support.
Any questions, discussion?
I'm, I have to admit, I'm a little uncomfortable as the, as the board member who serves on this committee. I was also under the impression that we would be having a special meeting as well to continue to go over these. And, you know, when we left, we were talking about sending out a survey so that we could sort of figure out a date that would work for everybody. So, I, I really think that out of respect for this committee, we should table these two votes here because these people put a lot of work into it and there are still questions that need to be answered.
So you're thinking that we wouldn't move forward with this program possibly?
No, I absolutely support these two programs. I think they're fantastic. I think STEAM is fantastic. I think, you know, all the work that has gone into it is great. But this committee meets for a reason, and, you know, I think that some people in the audience and who attend this committee feel blindsided, myself included.
But if you had that large 29 people in another group that were working towards this, and if we support moving forward with this, and they just have questions, I'm not seeing why we would hold it all up for some questions if, you know, majority of this, the other group is supportive of it.
Right, well.
And put in all the work.
Questions are important.
They are, but to hold up the entire, they can still ask their questions, but are they questions that might stop the program? I guess that's what I'm asking.
I mean, that could very well be. I guess that would be up to the committee. But to leave a committee with, okay, we're going to reconvene to discuss this and then, you know, put it on the table at a meeting, I think is kind of disrespectful.
I would say I feel blindsided, since I haven't heard from you as a board trustee, that you had any concerns. So this is the first time hearing of any concerns you had with this. I think their input is valuable, but it's just that it's input. And when we look at all of the people who have been involved in these two initiatives from day one, they've made a significant investment. I think it would be disrespectful to those teachers and those individuals who've put a lot of time and energy into both of these initiatives to not move this forward, because not moving this forward means we lose grant dollars, we lose opportunities for critical teacher training, we lose opportunities to get our people enrolled in critical summer initiatives to make this launch for our students in the fall. So not to move this now would really hurt our kids, and it would certainly hold back our teachers and help, and force them to miss out on some valuable training pieces. IDC's opinion is very respected. We want their opinions, we want their concerns. But as superintendent, we've received lots of feedback. We've had very collaborative groups that have worked on these two initiatives. It included a significant number of teachers on each group, which is why I felt comfortable bringing this forward to the board for recommendation tonight.
Well, you can see why letting this committee know would be important. And, you know, if, if they're just there for input and not even respected enough to get an email about the fact that this was happening, you know, I don't know why they even exist.
The agenda was public.
I think if you would have contacted administration prior to the board meeting, perhaps you'd have better depth of knowledge to your questions you're asking.
All right. The agenda was published, was public.
That's absolutely correct.
The agenda was public, yes, but this committee was not given the respect of getting a personal outreach to them.
The committee's been involved thoroughly, but again, I don't want to get into a discussion with the board member about that. It's a day-to-day operational issue, I'd be happy to talk with you about.
I guess I don't want to hold up and risk the grants at this point. That's my opinion. When maybe it's just questions and they wouldn't really not move forward anyways if they were to meet again. That's, I guess, my opinion.
Well, I mean, the issue here is a lot of actions were taken prior to IDC being consulted in the first place. Teachers are under the impression that they're already set to go, you know, and that they're going to training and, and things like that before IDC was moving forward with it. I think that this whole process has just sort of been out of whack.
So you're operating the, under the assumption that we need IDC blessing for any of these initiatives to go forward, which is not accurate. They advise the superintendent. They don't advise the board. They don't have any authority to block initiatives moving forward. While we value their input, and we would have hoped that there would have been an opportunity for a vote because that would have been a seal of approval from that committee. It's not a requirement that they give a vote of approval for curriculum initiatives to be moved forward by the school board. And we have had significant teacher involvement in both of these action groups. And again, as superintendent, I feel that there's been ample opportunity for teacher involvement and collaboration on these two key initiatives, and there will continue to be even after a vote tonight. And certainly, all of the concerns of IDC will be listened to, will be heard, and anything that we can do to help people feel more confident about these proposals will certainly take place.
Why wasn't, I mean, why was there enough time allotted to that, that subject? I mean, I understand that they're, they're advisory. I understand that to, to us and to the superintendent. But if it is important, then why didn't they, why was the meeting extended? I don't understand.
I don't believe that the members of the group wanted to meet any longer that day.
When did that meeting take place? Was that just last month?
The meeting just took place.
A week ago.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
You're not allowed to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you can't.
With all due respect, I sit on this board, and last year I was the chairperson on this board, and I think before you made your vote, you need to hear from actual members on this committee.
I would call for the vote.
I, I still, I still have a couple of questions. I just, I just want to make sure I understand this. I'm a little rusty on, on everything, so I understand it's advisory. Have you in the past been able, have you in the past done IDC stuff? Went around, not around them, but so to speak, not have them blessed a curriculum they went through? Is this normal like we've done in the past? Is this something we've done before?
The meeting was ended due to their contractual obligation and an hour and a half. That's what, how the meeting.
Right, it's not that they didn't want to continue any longer, and they were under the impression that we'd meet again. And I was too.
How many hours have, how many hours have been put into this development of this?
Hundreds of hours. I mean, and IDC has been advised and brought along and had information in plenty of advanced time to know what's going on. Many of the folks involved in IDC won't even be instructing in these course matters that are being brought forward. So, you know, I think that the friction comes from a district that's traditionally allowed the IDC to hold up potentially some of these items, and people won't like hearing that in the room because we're resistant to change. The IDC language clearly was changed to make it advisory to the superintendent, not to the board. We have to move initiatives forward. It's what our students demand. And again, it's not always going to be popular what I say from this chair, but I think the holdup isn't necessarily students with, how it benefits students, but perhaps how it might impact adults. And we're not here for that purpose. We're here for what's best for students. We have every intention to make sure our teachers that are involved are fully competent and fully prepared and trained. And again, I go back to all of the teachers that were involved in these action groups, the STEAM and the ELA. Ultimately, our teachers advised us on the ELA adoption. They are the ones who ultimately said, this is the one we feel best meets our needs. Same thing with STEAM. So there's been every opportunity for teacher involvement. To say that it's not been IDC formally blessing this, I would agree with that. So that's ultimately the board's decision how they want to handle that. But to not allow this to go through because the IDC hasn't formally blessed it, even though we intend to continue to work with the IDC, address their concerns, ultimately, you know, that's something that has to be weighed. And I don't think it's fair to our students to hold this up and risk the launch of having these materials, training, and opportunity for kids in place for next fall because IDC didn't take action on this yet.
Just a quick question, because one of the questions that was brought up was related to the grant. When was the grant received?
We received the grant right after Easter. A requirement is, a portion of the requirement of how we receive the grant was for the professional development that occurs, for the teachers to be signed up and enrolled in that professional development. That's in the summer, those college, those college professional development classes.
I think we have to keep in mind the goals of this board and of this district. They're not here, they were here.
In other words.
Our, our number one goal is to focus on advancing our students academically and giving them every opportunity. And that goes through curriculum alignment, that goes through every opportunity to advance their skills. And these programs both do that for us in a timely fashion. And I don't feel it's right to delay it. I, I'm sorry that the meeting ran out of time. I'm not sure I understand contractual time limits on a meeting. I've been at meetings that have gone for three and four and five hours until we've resolved the issues. So, I am in support that we move forward.
I just, just one final question, or maybe it might be more of a comment, I'm not sure. But it feels like, I feel comfortable with the number of teachers that are involved in the outset. I guess my question, this might be just rhetorical, is what is the point of involving the IDC at that point if we have, at the front end, all those teachers involved anyways in, in that, in that decision? I mean, it seems just like another hurdle to jump.
It's my understanding IDC was given all the information to study and to, to look through. And their questions could have been answered, you know, more than just of that meeting. Yes.
That's, that's kind of my, my thought process in this is that it felt like, it feels like just the conversation tonight was another hurdle to run, but it had already been reviewed by a number of professionals anyways at that point.
Oh, absolutely.
Is, is the process that was taken, and I'm just kind of from that new board member perspective, but is the process that was taken with both of these curriculums, I mean, it seemed very intensive to me. I know after the one board meeting for the, once had a curriculum, all the things were out on the table and it was kind of fun to check them out as a layperson. But it, it feels like it's maybe a traditional process that we've had for many years kind of coming in conflict with new ways of doing things that is a different type of engagement. And I, I think the two were just not quite in alignment yet on how those two, two styles are going to work together.
Well, IDC serves as an advisory.
Right, but if the new way of doing things is ignoring what that committee has to say, then why not just dissolve the committee, I guess? Because that, I mean, it's creating issues, clearly.
It's a contractual obligation.
In the contract.
It's IDC's in the contract. We honor that. We honor the PHEA contract. We've done that. And I think there is.
Is this really honoring that?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is there a, in the contract?
I feel like in name only, it's honoring it.
And I think that we can't hold up progress for hundreds of teachers and hun, thousands of students when we have tight deadlines and timelines because a committee didn't formally bless something. I mean, I want their opinion, I do. Our executive team wants their opinion, and we want to know what the concerns are. In fact, there's a lot of topics that are even, that are prohibited subjects of bargaining, for example, that we still want teacher input and opinion on. We always want that. We want input always on how things are working. New things certainly can be scary. New things, certainly, there'll be lots of questions. This has been thoroughly vetted. I would not assume superintendent of schools have brought this forward to the school board if we didn't have the, the depth of preparation, study, and involvement of teachers in this process. If the people that are going to be directly impacted by this weren't involved in these two committees, there is no way in the world I would have said to my team, we're ready to take this to the school board. And that's, you know, where I've balanced IDC didn't take a vote versus we've had teacher involvement, we've had in-depth study teams, you know, we have timelines, we've got to move forward. And we can still respect our IDC team. It's just this will be a time where they're not going to have a recommendation, whether it be yes or no. We still feel this is the right thing to move forward. If they were to vote no, for example, we would still feel this is the right thing to move forward on. Not, not that we don't respect their opinion, but we feel strongly enough, this is key for our students. We feel strongly enough that we have teachers that are very interested and want this to happen. For the ELA piece, it's our teachers that made ultimately the recommendation, that were involved in that committee, to the administration on what series to adopt. And we listen to that. So, we're listening, we always will. I think we just have the, as Denise said, an opportunity where maybe IDC didn't align with the action groups that were involved. In a perfect world, we would have that timing, but we're not in a perfect world on these two topics.
And those were STEAM teachers that will be in this program that were in the first group, right?
They were teachers that were interested in STEAM and volunteered and wanted to be a part of helping the district pull together our STEAM programs. We have not formally identified and specifically said X number of teachers will teach X number of STEAM courses. We haven't got that far yet. This is simply tonight approving the STEAM courses for us to move forward with using them in the district. The ELA piece, which are two separate motions, is certainly allocating dollars for a very specific adoption of ELA instructional materials. So there's two different depths of level there.
Mrs. Murphy, I, I think there's, there's a fundamental misunderstanding of the operation and decision-making process in organizations. and decision-making process in organizations, and the opportunity to offer input does not come with an obligation to agree with that input or even necessarily wait for it, because that is a variable and a small piece of the overall decision process, happens every day in every organization across the country and that kind of thing. So, my advice is when you have opportunity, I worked in an organization where I was, had the ability to offer opportunity to the leader of the, of the operation, and many times, my recommendation was not accepted, because the bigger picture for that leader was to make the decision what was in best interest of the organization, and that's why I, I agree with, and-
I, I don't think that's a fair statement. I feel like if it's about mutual respect here, then taking these leaders into account and communicating with them prior to the meeting, that special meeting could have been pushed forward. I guarantee that everybody who was on IDC would have been more than willing to meet earlier rather than later in order to go over this and get the questions answered or reach out on an individual basis. You know, there's just a way to go about things and, and have a level of mutual respect.
Well, I would disagree with that, because our agenda gets sent out to the PHEA leadership in advance of, of today.
Not any longer, is that right?
It's published and it's posted.
Right, but these aren't just community members, these are leaders in a council that, you know, deserve an individual, you know, being reached out to, not just, we posted a link on the website.
There, I, I'm certainly going to not try to single out details of day-to-day operational minutia at a school board meeting, but I can assure you that IDC members have been fully educated and had opportunity to know specifically what these presentations consist of, and had every opportunity to do homework on them and know what the, the school district was looking to do.
Can you call the question?
What's that?
Can you call the question?
Yes.
Call the board.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
No.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries five-one.
It is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopts the K-8 literacy programs as presented and approves the purchase of the six-eight ELA My Perspectives materials from Pearson for the total amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-five dollars and ninety-five cents. May I have a motion?
Support.
Any discussion? Mrs. Kudrow.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
No.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have general education development certificates to issue. It is a recommendation that the Board of Education approves the awarding of general education development certificates as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Support.
Mrs. Kudrow.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no items for information. This leads us to the next opportunity for citizens to speak. When you come to the, you have the opportunity to address the board, please direct your comments to the board. In the interest of time, while addressing the board, you will have three minutes of, for your remarks, please state your name and your address. These are only for non-agenda items.
It's fine. I came here tonight to talk about safety and security in our buildings, and I've changed my mind, I just want to talk about respect for a moment. Not because I don't think that safety and security in our buildings is important, I believe that every staff member and every student deserves the right to be safe and secure at every second of every day, and I believe that our staff goes above and beyond at all times to try to make sure, especially our teaching staff or paraprofessionals and our secretaries, to make sure that our students are safe and secure all the time. But respect is a big issue right now, and I don't know that that's an issue that we have fully grasped. Mr. Kane, tomorrow morning, we have a meeting at eleven o'clock, and it's certainly going to be an interesting one, and I'm not saying that to be me. I have a lot of information that I want to give you, and I'm very disappointed tonight, and I feel very disrespected. That's what I want to say today. My name's Kathy Murray, and I'm the president of the Port Huron Education Association, and I represent the teachers who work hard for this district every single day, who serve on committees, who give up hours and hours and hours of their life outside of contractual obligations for this district. And I don't feel valued today, and I know that many of them won't feel valued either. Thank you.
I am Trinket Easter. I live on Joanne Court in the city of Port Huron, and I am here to use my right as a taxpaying citizen of Port Huron to advise the board members. I want to alert you to a plight that our special education students are facing in the elementary schools. In order to qualify as having a specific learning disability as a special education student, a student has to go through a comprehensive assessment given by a licensed psychologist. It's very detailed. It shows what their weeks and their weaknesses and strengths are, and where they qualify for a learning disability. Following that, if they do qualify, they, there is a plan developed, I'll call it the plan, you'll hear other teachers call it an IEP. But in this plan, they include detailed accommodations, they include the hours of special education instruction that the student is required to receive, these are legal binding documents, and they also detail the academic goals that each student is supposed to receive, and these goals are monitored by certified qualified special education teachers. Before these elementary students are even certified, they usually are very self-aware of some of their struggles already. They notice that it takes them more time and practice to master concepts than their peers. They feel self-conscious about their areas of disability already, they notice that they're different, and they feel frustrated because they find it more difficult to do subjects that they have difficulty in as opposed to things that they're, they have strengths in. They're already aware of this, this is sort of their, what they see when they sit at their desks and they, they look around the classroom, and they understand this very well, even before they qualify. And I wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Murphy said, where students should have every opportunity in our district, and Mr. Kane said we shouldn't hold up the progress for hundreds of teachers or thousands of students. I wanted to tell you about testing in our district. In addition to the qualifying assessment that these special ed students have to take, they have monitoring, in addition to the monitoring assessments that they do with their special education teachers, and in addition to their grade level classroom tests and quizzes, they have to take a writing district benchmark assessment two times a year. The regular ed students take about two to three days to take this, and they do it, like I said, two times per year, for about a total time of approximately four to six hours, just the regular education students. Then, the regular education students take our NWEA tests three times a year. There are three test, three different tests that are taken three times a year. So, for a regular education student, that's about a total of about nine hours in testing. And then, right now, we're in our fall, winter, and testing season right now, they also have to take the state Michigan M-Step test, and that's typically five days of testing. For regular education students, that can be a total on the low end for third graders with about four hours of testing, and for the top end for fifth graders, almost eight hours of testing for regular education students. Our special education students with specific learning disabilities, they have, according to their accommodations, they usually have to do small group or individual testing, and there are time conflicts for them. This usually takes weeks, logistically. At this time, the assessments, all of these assessments are administered by their special education teachers, which means that because they're administered by their special education teachers, the NWEA assessments and the district writing assessments have to take place usually during regular classroom instruction hours, because logistically, they just can't take them at any other time. Because the tests are administered by the certified qualified special education teachers, then usually that required special education time that the student is supposed to be receiving is given by substitutes who are not typically certified and qualified to give the instruction. They, these are our kids who already know that they're struggling, they're already behind, they're required to test longer, because they also are given frequent breaks, they, because it's read aloud or in small group, they have to take frequent breaks, and they, it just takes them a long time, because we already know that it takes them time and practice in order to master the concepts anyway. On a conservative end, due to their testing, their actual testing time, the time that they miss from regular classroom instruction, and the time that they miss from their special education instruction from their qualified certified teacher, I'd say conservatively, they're missing about four weeks of instruction a year, probably more accurately between eight and ten weeks of instruction a year, which is about a semester that they're losing in, in, in instruction, and these are already the kids who are already behind. I think we shouldn't hold them back any longer, and I know that the board doesn't have control over the state testing, but I would like to urge you to investigate and validate the information that I'm giving you, talk to our special education teachers, talk to our special education students and parents, find out their frustrations, their helplessness, their hopelessness. The results that we get from these tests, they just show us the same things that we already know and that the special ed teachers are monitoring anyway, where they are, what they're behind in, how far they are behind. I would please advise you to reconsider your assessment policies for all students, but especially for our special education students, please consider waiving them from district, from district tests that are already being done, that they're already working through, just so that they can get the instruction time that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. This moves us to our opportunity for board comments on agenda items, district items. Can I have any discussion from anyone? If not, we're going to move to adjourn to closed session to discuss negotiations.
So moved.
It's a recommendation that the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss negotiations, then reconvenes to adjourn the regular meeting.
Still so moved.
Support.
All those, or no, now is the favorite color.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This is the recommendation, is the Board of Education adjourns the regular meeting? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Kudrow.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Ms. Alderman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
My mic's not on, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Ryan.
Say it loud.
Yes.
Mr. Stout.
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll just say thank you.